Ready, sir?
Yes.
Hey, the City of Marine City Commission meeting is called to order on Thursday, March 7th, 2024 at 7 o'clock PM. We have a moment of silence to send our positive thoughts and prayers to those in our community that need our support. Okay, now please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hey, can I get roll call, please?
Mr. Bryson?
Here.
Mr. Hendrick?
Here.
Mr. Clausen?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rorig? Mr. Ross?
Here.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Here.
City Manager Atkins?
Here.
I'll make a motion to excuse Commissioner Rorig, she's sick tonight.
Support.
Motion and support? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number four, approval of the agenda, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support?
Motion and support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Onto item five, for presentations, proclamations, and recognitions, we have none. Onto item number six now for public comment. Anyone is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name, limit your comments to five minutes, the Commission will not respond, while a follow-up is necessary. And again, please remember to address the Commission and myself as the Chair when you go up to speak. Anybody like to go?
Evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners, thank you very much for giving me five minutes to speak on this subject. I've been up here many times, I thought was going to be on the agenda, I see it's not on the agenda, and I'm going to be in Tennessee in two weeks visiting my grandkids. So I'll take advantage of these five minutes to go over some things. Some of it's a repeat, but I think there's some things we need to think about. The City of Algonac, if you not know, that they turned down their pot ordinance, and that was good news to hear. And the reason that reminded me, I know we talked about a year ago, and we talked to the city attorney about getting it put on for the public to have a vote on it, and the conclusion was is we really can't do that, that's your job to do that. But however, if you're concerned about litigation lawsuits and ordinances and those kinds of things, and petition drives, well, don't worry about it, let it go, let it go on the vote, let the people have a say about what they want to do. I'll have to get my troops and my people out, and we'll work hard to make sure it's not passed. So I don't think we should pass an ordinance at this point, I think we should wait and see what happens. If they put a petition drive up, we'll either fight it on the ballot issue, or you can pass your ordinance somewhere in the point before that happens. So I really would like you to think about that and reconsider that. We have an ordinance now that was unanimous that not to have a pot shop in town, so we don't need to do anything except just keep the status quo. So I wish you would really take a look at that. Again, there's very few pot shops in cities, only 10% of municipality cities have a pot shop. There's no reason, St. Clair's not going to get one, Algonac doesn't appear to get one right now. So if we do happen to get one, if we do happen to get one, we're going to be kind of the regional hub for this area for people to come into our town. And when they come into town to get their pot, they're going to take it in our parks, they're going to our beach, they're going on the front, or they're going to smoke it and they're going to drive intoxicated. So that's extra things that we have to put on our law enforcement officers here in the city to tend to. Also, anytime you have a pot shop, alcohol, same thing, you have to keep close eyes to make sure youngsters aren't getting in there, or other people aren't buying it for them and supplying it. So our law enforcement has to keep an eye on that shop to make sure it's run correctly and make sure that there's not underage kids getting in there. And that's another thing that we throw on our law enforcement officers to have to tend to. Also, because they don't take credit, there's large amounts of cash that are kept in there, and that's another issue that we have to be careful with in law enforcement, to watch the amount of money that's coming in, those kinds of things. I went around this week talking to some of the school principals and the pastors in town to try to get them aware of what was going on. It's unanimous, they don't want to see it, they're willing to work to prevent it, and I think we got their support. As I talked about, the biggest problem with the marijuana shop is the edibles. And it's for me, it's about the kids and keeping it away from the kids, it's school security. You can't keep it away from high school kids that bringing in lunch and they have a brownie, they have their gummies or whatever, and they have them for lunch and they're stoned all through the afternoon, and then they get in cars and drive out of the parking lot and go home. There's really no way for school security to monitor that. And I know, you know, there's always going to be illegal drugs, I did 40 years in law enforcement, there's always going to be illegal drugs around, but we don't need to have a pot shop in our town advertising to our kids and community and people who come into our lovely town and they drive past a pot shop with flashing lights and all that. I don't think that's the kind of message that we want to send in our town. So please, stay steady, just stick with the ordinance you got, you don't have to do anything, wait and see what happens. If there is a movement in town to get something moving, we'll fight it on the ballot, or you'll have a chance to bring your ordinance online and be able to take care of that. Also, I guess that's pretty much all I had, except for the things that I've repeated before. I'm here pleading on half of the kids, they're your constituents, just like everybody else's, and I know they don't vote, but you need to look out for them. And I don't think Marine City needs to send a message out that we want to have a pot shop in town. If it has to happen and the people vote on it, just like you said a year ago, let them vote on it. Give me a chance to go out into the public and convince the public, like we do in our fair country and democracy, to go out and tell them, hey, this is why we don't want one, and we'll put the troops out there, and I'm very confident that it will not pass. Thank you so much for putting up for me coming up here continuously, and a lot of this is a repeat, but I think it's something really dear to my heart, and I think it's important, and you won't have to worry about me next week, I'll be in Tennessee, but thank you so much for the time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other public comment? All right. Moving on to item seven, approval of the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the City Commission meeting minutes of February 15th, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
Okay, motion and the support, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, carries. And can I have a motion to approve the City Commission closed session meeting minutes of February 15th, 2024?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, that carries. Onto item A, the consent agenda. We have the 300 Broadway meeting minutes of January 29th, 2024, and then we have the Community and Economic Development meeting minutes of November 29th, 2023. And can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items A and B as presented?
Make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A through B.
Support.
As presented.
Motion and the support, any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yep.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Mr. Carrion?
Okay. On nine items removed from the consent agenda, there are none. Under financial business, 10A expenditures including payroll of $575,490.23. Can I have a motion to approve the expenditures including payroll in that amount of $575,490.23?
Make a motion, we approve expenditures including payroll for $575,490.23.
Support.
Okay, and any discussion?
Question. One thing on here is, looks like you guys got the playground equipment?
Yes, so finally was received, this was under the grant from T-Mobile for the playground equipment.
Okay, so you purchased something?
I believe it was approved when the grant, this was before I had received, before I was here, but I believe it was at the time that the grant was received and approved from T-Mobile, then it was.
Well, I wasn't sure they were going to, they said some of it they couldn't get, and some of it they were waiting on, so I guess I'm not even sure what.
It was all together, it's the entire playscape, and actually it came in under the amount of the grant, which is good.
All right. That's my only question.
We were very excited to be, see it being installed, it's pretty cool.
Hey, any other discussion? Hey, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Carrion?
And now we're on to 11 for unfinished business, 11A, there's a response letter of the intent to purchase Washington Life Center property from the East China School District, and we'll let the City Manager pick on it.
Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, we had received a verbal answer from the school superintendent, however, we felt it was appropriate, being as though our request was placed in writing, to have a written response back. And I did ask the superintendent, and she was very expedient in providing a response back to us, which has been included in your packet and for the public, so I would ask that the Commission receive and file the correspondence. Again, it indicates that the school district is not interested in selling the property with the Washington Life Center.
Any other discussion? Can I get a motion to receive and file?
Make a motion to receive and file.
Support.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Under 11B, it's the ordinance 02-2024, the winter parking and snow removal ordinance, and I believe it is going to be for the second reading. And can I have a motion to approve ordinance 02-2024, an ordinance of the City of Marine City, St. Clair County, Michigan, to establish winter parking and snow removal, Title VII, Chapter 70, entitled "Winter Parking and Snow Removal" for second reading and adoption?
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number 02-2024, winter parking, snow removal for second reading and adoption.
Support. Support.
Okay, the motion and the support, now any discussion?
This will indicate that winter will be over and spring will be here, now that you're approving it.
Very hopeful.
I just wanted to point out that highlighted was the requested addition, I believe by Commissioner Ross, to clarify the ability to park in front yards and lawns during declared snow emergency events or winter parking restrictions. Thank you.
Hey, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Vandembosh?
Yes.
Mr. Bryson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Carrion?
Onto 12A for new business, we have our annual reports from city departments and planning commission. So, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll try to move as expediently as possible through this. One of the questions is, again, why are we having these annual reports or classifying this as an annual meeting? Hopefully, we will get into the practice that we'll have this annual meeting as it should be, annually, and hopefully more towards the beginning of the year, January or February. However, it is, I think, a good practice to be able to have this type of meeting, to share the reports from certain boards, committees, and commissions, and department heads, not just with the City Commission, but with the public of activities that are going on and have gone on through the past year. Also, it is a requirement for us to achieve our redevelopment-ready status, so we are an engaged community at some point, we're working towards certification, and an annual report is a requirement. So I think in the spirit of sharing information with the public and with the Commission, this is a good practice. It provides information to not just you, but again, the residents, the businesses, and again, achieves us one step closer into our redevelopment efforts. Little bit about where we are and where we've been in the past year. As you know, we continue to rebound years later after the great recession in the economy, and we've been doing very well here in the city, with balanced budgets and working within our means, maintaining the tax level and working proactively to keep all of those items in check. A lot of kudos to the Commission for keeping very tight rein on the staff and on the budget, and the staff on working through and administering the process. We are seeing and have seen for the past now two years, return and actually a slight increase in values of homes, largely that is based upon investments in homes, people that have been reinvesting, rebuilding, new home construction, and of course, the economy. When the market is good, we benefit from an increase in the taxable value. But again, important to stress to the residents that that does not mean that there has been any change in the millage rate, so that is, you know, remained the same. The increases that we see are based upon values of homes. We also are seeing an increase in commercial investment and new small business startup. We are having a lot of inquiries on vacant buildings and availability and new construction, and also a spike in residential purchases, again. So depending what you watch on television, you know, the news channel you turn to, the market has slowed a little bit, but really is still a very healthy and hearty housing and now commercial retail market, again, in the city. And it helps us set our strategy moving forward of what we want to address as far as any prime areas, whether it be the Plaza or Water Street, Broadway, other areas in the city. This past year, year and a half, we've had almost a complete reset of staffing at the city, and I am very pleased to say that I think we have the best of the best of our department heads and our employees here in the city. Everything is moving along without really any chaos and disorder and really becoming a true Marine City family inside here. So I appreciate the Commission's support on us going through and the hiring that we've been able to do, and we really have some top-notch staff here. And I could tell story after story of how many of our employees go above and beyond, coming in without compensation, volunteering at committees, and really working to make sure that we're doing the best that we can for the residents and the businesses of Marine City. We're transforming to new forms of technology, and I see that we're starting to see the tablets and laptops showing up here. Again, this is in a way of being able to make sure that we're sharing all of the information to the Commission, and you have it right in front of you in real time, the work that the city clerk has put in to the Peak Agenda Management, which is a wonderful tool, it's going to help us getting that information out to the public in a quicker method on the website, and we are investigating, as we mentioned before, a complete reset button on our website. We have a very old, non-supported version of the website, so we'll be looking at proposals to upgrade the website, and it's not uncommon to have to do this every three to five years, but we also want to incorporate pieces that we've discussed here at various meetings, of citizen reporting modules, and perhaps an email distribution list, or things that we can help get more information out to the residents, and residents can sign up and kind of choose what information they want to have sent. So if they want weather alerts, we can do that, if they want certain other community alerts, we're going to have hopefully some great options to look at. Again, stabilized annual budgets, be very fiscally responsible. Our treasurer is very active, she'll be attending her second year of the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Institute, working towards her certification, and the city clerk will actually be attending his municipal clerk certification. These are great things to have, these are certainly small dollar investments for a big outcome for our staff and for our community, so I'm very, very proud of them and pleased that they're actively engaged in not just the statewide organizations, but our county organizations as well. We are actively working on creating long-term capital improvement plans, generally that's something that the City Commission has always done at budget time, but we're taking it, I guess, to capital improvement 2.0, where we're going a little farther and deeper, so five, 10, 15 years in identifying items that will be coming up. We know that it's fluid and will change from time to time, but we really want to set a more solid roadmap and a planning tool. We'll probably be looking to get together and break bread over a strategic planning session in the future as well. We're evaluating and focusing city operations to be more resident-focused and transparent, and improving service delivery, and I think all of the tools that we're putting out there can only assist us in doing that. We're developing city initiatives such as aggressive housing and neighborhood stabilization. This week has been a busy week of actually getting right out into neighborhoods where we've had problems, identifying those, trying to work with solutions with property owners and neighbors back and forth, but we're also taking a more aggressive approach on some of the problem properties that we've had in the past, and Mr. Davis has been working with us. We added a couple more items under the dangerous buildings meeting last month, and we have more that are coming up. I kind of classify them as the problem children buildings, both residential and commercial, that we have had reoccurring problems, three, five, eight, 10 years of a history that either nothing has been done or very little, and then we have to start over. So, and you all know that we will have, again, a readdressing of the vacant building ordinance in the very near future, and anybody that's seen the events, and I think everybody has, that occurred in Clinton Township this past weekend, it really is a safety issue when we have some people doing lord knows what in the buildings and we have no accountability. So we're going to look at that language piece very carefully, and I'm sure the fire chief and police chief appreciate that in some of these buildings. Enhanced code enforcement, we've changed our strategy, our code enforcement officer is now taking a different approach as far as documenting, working on courtesy notices, and again, we're willing to work with anyone that has a violation to get them to conform to fixing that. And if we send out a notice that's 10 or 14 days, we'll give you extra time if you're willing to put a plan together and take steps to take action. But if we get no action, then we're going to take a new approach, and that's going to be unfortunately going to a citation process, and in some cases elevating to dangerous buildings and to the city attorney to take the circuit court. There are just some people who won't listen any other way, but we want to again stress that we're willing to work with residents and business owners if they make an effort to come into compliance. We're working on a focus that's make it happen in Marine City, it's just kind of an informal name, but it's a strategy to build new partnerships with outside organizations, with supporting organizations that we've had perhaps underutilized memberships with, so that may be the Michigan Municipal League, it may be, of course, the Regional Chamber of Commerce, SEMCOG, and of course, taking advantage of the number of local organizations that we have here, looking at things a different way, and you can get more done collectively than you can individually, so very positive. Continued investments and reinvestments in the Nautical Mile and key commercial areas and neighborhoods, we're taking a neighborhood-by-neighborhood approach, we're going to be dividing up the city this year into sections for a deep scouring spring cleaning look as far as code enforcement, and again, going out, identifying, and sending out courtesy notices. And that's the process that we're going to start, and then we'll see where we go from there if we get favorable compliance. But again, we're willing to work with folks. Increased inquiries are occurring right now to the city for future investment opportunities from small businesses, and it's good to see, I think that we are making that turn since COVID and some of the economic issues, that now people are comfortable in coming back and looking at reinvesting in the city, and we're also looking at the strategy through the master plan of how can we be creative and maybe looking at mixed uses in traditional general business or central business districts, where we can have maybe smaller square footage buildings, smaller square footage uses, and be innovative. Again, looking at our focus on redevelopment strategies, the Community and Economic Development Board is going through the process of the best practices for redevelopment-ready, and I think we're going to practice, best practice three of six at future meetings, so residents that are interested in coming to those meetings, by all means, come and learn about what we're doing as far as a strategy. Enhancing resident services again, and improving city infrastructure. And how do we get there? It's teamwork, it's everybody together, it's this Commission, it's all the employees, it's the residents, the businesses, it's leading, I guess, a comprehensive civic engagement to get to that point. The annual meeting, hopefully we'll plant some thoughts in all of our minds of moving forward to the next strategic planning process, and really putting a good, solid, three, five, and 10-year plan together, a wish list perhaps. We want to continue transparency efforts, again, through this meeting and through putting as much information out available to the public as possible, in as simple as a way as possible to get that. We realized in looking at the website that when you have to go eight or 10 clicks into the website to find something, we've lost somebody at three clicks. So we're working to clean that up so that information is available and right in the forefront. Hopefully, we can look at, again, expanding this, if this works out well, maybe we want to look at a general town hall meeting once a year to gauge residents' input in addition to the regular meetings. Our significant projects, as you all know, top on the list is the $26 million-plus safe drinking, excuse me, safe drinking water project. That is about 35% complete in the pre-engineering, and we expect that that pre-engineering piece will, the remaining portions will be wrapped up rather soon. The heavy work of the surveying and the underground assessments are pretty much finished now and going on to the approval process with the State of Michigan on pre-approval. And then we're also working concurrently on the bonding and financing piece, and again, aggressively working on lowering that dollar amount that would be a resident responsibility to the lowest possible number that we can get. And looking at some ordinance changes that'll be in front of you shortly will help that, because we have a number of multifamily apartments or duplexes that maybe had only had a charge for one tap. And if you have 24 units, you have 24 residential units, so we need to really look at that. And that's a minor change by way of ordinance, but it could cause a little disruption for people who own the larger complexes, but fair is fair. If a single-family resident has a single tap, then a 24-unit apartment should have an equivalent 24-unit tap fee structure. I'll use the counselor of law to help on that. We're completing the review again and development of new comprehensive master plan, Park and Recreation Plan, which should be coming before Planning Commission of this body very soon for the required 63-day review before it achieves final approval. That will then spur us into a review of certain city ordinances, primarily the zoning ordinance. We likely will have some minor changes to the zoning map. Again, when we're looking at mixed-use properties, right now, they may just be classified as general or central business, but we may want that to be a mixed use that would allow perhaps some other secondary neighborhood-friendly uses. We're also looking at using, and coming up here March 18th, Planning Commission has a public hearing, it's the first time we're going to be utilizing our conditional zoning ordinance for an adaptive reuse of the former Jefferson School gym, and we're also going to be looking at using our planned unit development ordinance, the PUD ordinance, on a multiple-family apartment complex, which could again build at their location by right under our ordinance, but we again want to look at value-added, meaning the city wants a little more than just what is allowed by the ordinance, so more open space, more environmentally friendly pieces, connectivity by sidewalks, paths, trails, buffering, so I think that'll be very exciting. These are never projects that are generally embraced and loved, but we're looking at doing something to get more and more value to protect our residents than just taking the same old basic requirement in the ordinance. Again, working through that, the development on the Parks and Recreation side, not just the tot lot, but addressing, some things are very minor issues in our parks, signage, accessibility, the new marina, so it is a whole, larger-scale, but phased approach of looking at getting our parks in better conditions, and then again, looking at identifying future uses, whether that be some type of adaptive reuses from the city's perspective at 300 Broadway, or are we looking at splash pads, skate parks, other things that we can put on that wish list, put it in the master plan, and that qualifies us to be able to apply for grants that right now, we may not be able to if those items are not in our master plan or rec plan. Again, I think there's a lot of information here, there are a lot of things happening, and we couldn't make it happen if it wasn't for everybody working together. I can tell you today, I've been here about a year now, I don't know where the time went, and this is a different City of Marine City today than it was a year ago, and it is nice to see us moving forward, working together. We don't always agree on everything, but we agree to disagree, and we do it in a more cordial and friendly manner, and I think that staff changes and stabilization are an asset to that as well. We, again, I can't say enough, I appreciate all of the support staff that we have, right down to our regular DPW workers, our police officers, fire authority firefighters, the kids that are out being beach attendants and our seasonal help, which by the way, if anybody's interested in applying for seasonal help, please, see us at City Hall, we're hiring. At this point, I'd just like to thank everyone for listening to me go on, hopefully I didn't go too fast, I wasn't too long, and if you want to learn more, any of the residents or folks, please, reach out to your commissioners, reach out to me, city department heads, we're here working for you, and we're willing to, you know, take the good and the bad, and work towards a better tomorrow. So get involved, consider serving on a board committee or commission if you're not, and I would like to turn it over, if there are no questions of me, to the department heads.
Mr. Manager, was there a comma in that sentence?
Maybe. So I guess in no, you know, great order there, Department of Public Works. There actually is an order, so we're going to throw him off a little bit.
Alphabetical.
I may have missed you, but you want to go at the end, I think, for your election.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commission, and everyone else in attendance?
Please.
Just want to touch on a few things, normally I just have some bullet points and I kind of expand on those, however, I did write a few things out because I didn't want to take a chance on missing anything of the points I wanted to touch on, I was a little worried I might run a little bit long, but I don't think that's a danger now.
Touche.
So, Scott touched- Yes, so Scott touched on the safe drinking water project. Everything is on track. I just wanted to clarify for the residents that all lead and galvanized service lines are going to be replaced as part of this project, not just the streets that are getting the new water mains and so on. So I just want to make sure that everybody was aware that they are getting new ones if that's what they currently have. And Scott also touched on, the construction bidding goes out in late June and the financing is supposed to close in the fall. So basically, construction will probably begin of spring of 2025. So that's where we're at with that. The wastewater treatment plant, we're nearing the installation of the pumps, you know, removing the old screen pump and getting the new pumps in place, hopefully within the next few weeks. There's been delays right from the get-go and it's been very frustrating, but hopefully we're there. We also have some major maintenance and structural issues at that plant. We're going to need to address those at some point. The repairs are necessary not only to keep the plant running, but to stay in compliance. So these repairs will be coming your way at some point, once I have the final numbers and everything like that, I'll share that with you. The water treatment plant, I know there's been some questions in the past regarding the small seepage on the north wall. This is due to a tiny breach in the east sediment basin where the settling occurs during the treatment process. This leak has been there for years, it'll be repaired as part of the grant improvements, but it makes no sense to continually power wash brick and mortar that was constructed in the 30s. It just further weakens it. So once the repairs have been complete, then we'll go ahead and we'll clean up that wall and we should be fine, just to clarify that. Also, this does not affect the quality of the drinking water in any way. Dave runs the plant and, is that pretty accurate?
That's correct.
Okay. The tot lot, we've received the shipment of new playground equipment for that, and we've removed the old playground equipment, so it looks pretty bare out there. But as time and conditions permit, we'll begin the installation of the new stuff. The beach bathrooms, another thing that's come up several times and people have had some questions about. As you all know, the roof was replaced last year, replaced, we replaced all the wood that was rotted, painted both of the bathrooms and shed, and actually, everything looks great and we did it for just over $7,000. At some point in the future, we're going to need to either rehab both or start over from the ground up. Hopefully, there's some grants out there for that, which I'm pretty confident there is. So for this reason, it really didn't make a lot of sense to put any more money into it than we had to. Right now, it looks probably better than it has in many, many years. So, the cemetery, okay? I also know there's been some talk about the mounds of clay at several of the burial sites. The conditions have been very wet all year, especially the sections nearest the river, which is where the mounds are. We created large ruts, just getting equipment in there to dig these graves. And to go ahead and try and remove those with added weight to the construction equipment, not only would it tore up the cemetery even worse than it already is, I didn't want to take a chance on displacing headstones or anything like that. So that's why it has been sitting, hoping the ground would solidify because it never really did freeze too much this year. So rather than wait until summer when the ground is solid and we can get more equipment in there, I had the guys go out with wheelbarrows and shovels and move it all by hand. And you know what? They went out there, they did not complain. When they were finished, they were three inches taller because of all the mud on the bottom of their boots, every shovel full, they had to scrape the clay off of. And you know what? They did it, to their credit. No complaints, just a bunch of good guys. Which brings me, lastly, I just want to thank all the guys at the DPW for their hard work and dedication to the city. Much like fire and police, when most folks are home in their warm beds, they're out there clearing roads, making them safe, repairing water mains, trying to get water back to the residents in a timely fashion, cutting trees and limbs during windstorms, just to name a few things. So their hard work is really appreciated. And I don't want to leave out Michaela either, the office manager at the DPW, she does a great job. She helps residents with issues throughout the community, at the cemetery. She's great. If you remember last year, during Labor Day when we didn't have any beach attendants, she worked the entire weekend just to make sure we had somebody out there. So she's, she's great as well. And that's pretty much all I have. I just wanted everybody to be aware that we appreciate across the board, all the departments, everybody does a great job. And like Scott said, I think we have a really good team in place here, so I'm thankful for that. And thanks to all of you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Oh, I have one. You know, they've done the surveying, I don't know how many times I've been asked, the white squares that they paint, anybody know what those mean?
That is all part of the pre-engineering.
Okay.
So they actually have like aerial equipment that they go through and they're documenting everything in preparation for the project.
And then they just put a mark so they know.
Exactly.
I've seen lots of blue lines, but not white squares. Blue lines are water.
White squares.
Correct.
Yeah, no, these are just white, white squares like this, about this size.
Yeah, that's F and V.
They're also doing GPS mapping and updating our maps, so a lot of things, I think they've been using drones and other, so those markers are very helpful for them to be able to do from an aerial standpoint. We have to look at what the key code is to understand what they are, so it'll be very helpful at the end.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
And if anybody was following along, I intentionally moved the clerk to the very end because he's going to cover the election piece as well. So, fire, the fire chief, I know you are. You told me you were. So, fire chief, you're going soon.
Thought you had a few more minutes, right?
Good evening, all. I'm here to give you an update on stuff that's going on in Fire Hall, good, bad, and ugly. Some of the good stuff is we've been saving money over the years on what we put into what we call a restricted fund. That is at $126,240. If, just to give you a little history of that, if the fire authority was to disband, portions of that would go back to each municipality, which Marine City's portion would be $61,857.60. I believe in the next couple of meetings, you'll probably be doing a, we'll be, have given you a letter to ask you to keep that money with us so we can keep it in a restricted fund. And what we do with that is we buy major purchases. And one of them that the board approved at our last meeting is to buy a new rescue truck, which we'll be doing here shortly, which will be roughly $65,000 when it's all done, all set up and done. And that is no cost. We're not going to come back to any municipality and ask for money because we do have that restricted fund. Another good thing that we're doing is starting Monday, our kitchen at the station will be tore out and we'll be putting in new floor and new cabinets. And some of that money was from a couple that passed away in Coderville Township that donated, I believe it was around $20,000, around $20,000. So we'd be using some of that restricted fund to update our kitchen that's been since 81, I believe. And another good thing that we, the board approved, was some iPads for each of our trucks. We've been utilizing them, we've been doing annual inspections, all the businesses, and kind of proud to say that we have 89% of the businesses in every iPad now. So if there is a call at a, one of our businesses in town, we have locations, a shut-off, we have emergency contact numbers, and a lot of vital other stuff, some of the stuff that's in these buildings. I know the city manager mentioned Clinton Township and it's a big eye-opener of what happened there. A lot of trucks and a lot of businesses got damaged because of that. Since you guys have passed the Knox box ordinance, I have 10 new Knox boxes at town in businesses that have volunteered to put them in since we've been doing our inspections. We just submitted a grant with Elginak, St. Clair, and Clay Township Fire for $437,000 for all new turnout gear for all the departments, which would be 90 sets. Last year's runs, we did 832 calls of service, mostly by paid-on-call firefighters. Our numbers are dwindling. We had 19, or 21 last year, we're at 19 now. If we don't start getting some people that want to join and do this, we're going to be coming back to the city and other municipalities and asking them to do a millage to support full-time firefighters because we're just not getting the people out there that want to do this job. And the same for the police department. All the DPW, all of them are trying to find somebody to do the work. That's all I have, but if anybody knows anybody that is willing to do this job, we pay for all training, we pay for the clothing, turnout gear, and all that stuff. So please pass it on.
Any questions? I got gear for you. I'm coming back out of retirement, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you. Police chief, you're up.
I'm coming in.
See, I talked about teamwork. I talked about teamwork, here it is.
Nothing finer than teamwork.
So before, good evening, Mayor, commissioners. I had actually asked Sergeant Martinelli to put together an annual report, which I believe is before you tonight. He is readily available to answer any questions regarding the annual report, if you should have him before I get into my little spiel. If anybody has any questions on that?
Well done.
I can't take full credit. Officer Redman, who's very computer savvy, helps me out with this. He helps out with some of the graphs and that.
Do you have this available for everybody online?
We can probably get that over to the city.
Some more so that everybody can see your statistics.
Yes.
It's good information.
And three clicks or less, we promise.
Separate it from the.
This is all done on Windows Vista.
Wow.
That's impressive.
I'm trying.
I appreciate that, thank you, sir.
He remembers the PowerPoint presentation.
One thing I'd like to say is, we have a very safe city. I mean, overall, I came from Oak Park, retired from Oak Park, I mean, what a difference coming here. People love us. I'm on day shift till, well, today was my last one, I gotta go to nights on Monday. But, you know, you have to wave to people 60 times a day. I mean, friendly people, they love us. And the guys work hard and it's a very safe city. You should be happy with the safety of our city.
Yes.
The whole county, actually, but definitely Marine City.
To add, add to what he was saying, we are absolutely honored and thrilled to be a part of this community. To piggyback off of what the fire chief said, we're at a point right now where our numbers within our department are absolutely the lowest I've ever seen them. But the entire, but 23 budget not filling a sick shift that you guys approved last year. I have room for two day shifts, two midnight shifts, and two afternoon cars with one of those being thrown into the school during the school year. We went almost the entire year with that other shift not being filled. Just recently lost another officer, hired him, young kid Brent Murray, hired him in August. He just left us today was his last day, he went back to the city of Inglewood. New leadership down there and he's that go-getter, he's that crime fighter, he's that I want to get into everything possible. Still trying to figure out why he came to Marine City because he wasn't getting that either. So he subsequently left and left a vacancy for us, so I'm two officers short. I've got one officer currently still in the background phase, I'm waiting for the state to be able to flip the switch to hire her and then pull her aboard, then I'll still have another opening. So I'm assuming if there is a candidate that's out there that wants to apply, that isn't certified or gone to an academy, I'd be willing to talk to them, to meet with the city manager, and possibly come to you guys for funding, maybe to sponsor maybe a hometown, local Marine City resident that wants to give back to their community. And maybe we can be able to fund somebody in the police academy. But for now, all options are on the table and if you've got any experience, part-time or full-time, and want to be a cop here in Marine City, we're going to welcome your application and resume. To add to also what the fire chief said, you know, he's updating his kitchen since 1981. We at Police Department unfortunately don't have a kitchen to their size, we don't have couches, we don't have recliners, we don't have beds, we don't have any of that, so.
You're all in better shape, though.
For the most part, the equipment at the, at the building is in pretty good shape. We've been there since 2007, 2008. The biggest thing that's probably going to come out of the meeting with the city manager is going to be just something to do siding-wise on that building. That siding has been there and it's, I'm afraid what's happening behind it because it's all that wood siding and it's starting to split and separate stuff. And Mike Hittredge told me a couple of years ago that it's going to need to be replaced. So that's going to be the biggest purchase coming out, but something we can evaluate probably in the next year or two. So a little update for us also on, you know, 2023, besides me being the acting city manager for four months, which was an honor to, you know, to be part of that as my hometown, but please don't ask me about it again. We, you know, completed the budget process, you know, you guys approved a pretty good budget. Just updated both of our two brand-new patrol cars, fully functional on the road, and we are very happy to have those, we don't have to have them breaking down. We're going through some issues for a while with the oil consumption.
Still going through those issues.
Yeah, so we're trying to figure out with GM why that's doing that. There's a big email thread from the state, there's several agencies that are going through this. GM says it's just normal, while we're going through two, three quarts of oil like every couple of weeks. So we can't figure it out. GM says it's no big deal, called the local dealership, they're like, it's no big deal. So we're trying to, hopefully, that this all passes and goes away. Also, last year, they started an encryption project. For those in the public that don't know what that is, is they want to take our radios and encrypt them to kind of prevent people from getting on Facebook and stuff and reporting everything that is happening to keep the officer's safety, et cetera, in case there's a bad guy out there that wants to, you know, do harm to a cop or whatever reason. They want to encrypt it, so it's only, only going to be able to be heard from agencies who have this encryption on their radio. So talks of that were last year. Now we're getting to the point where it's probably going to come to fruition this year. That's what I'll talk about after this, you know, in my ask. So that's a big, big thing that's happening. I also came before you asked to update our body cameras. I'm a big believer in if there's technology out there that'll help keep us safer, reduce liability, keep the citizens safer, I'm all about it. I'll come before you ask for approval, before anything is done. So the body cam was a big one, those will be here probably in three to four weeks, I'm assuming. New guns, I think I've talked about that before at a commission meeting, we ordered new Glocks with red dot sights on them. Training was supposed to be at the end of March, but my red dot instructor was Brent Murray, who just left us, so now I'm trying to find an instructor to get us up and qualified. But those will be in service here, hopefully by the end of March, beginning of April. And then I, the final thing that I would like to add that, I'm going into my 24th year here at the city, eight and a half of the chief. This is by far the best I've ever seen relationships with every department. The communication, the camaraderie, everything that you could ever want in your work group is here. And like the city manager said, we're not always going to get along, but we're still going to be able to talk about it and move past it and figure out, you know, a solution. There is not one person in here that stomps their feet and says this is how it's going to be. It's none of that. It's friendly, it's a team, the communication, everything is by far the best I've ever seen. 24 years. So on occasion, maybe once, twice a week, you'll see my truck, I'm down at the fire department, they've got some of the best coffee around. So, well, my wife always asks me, she's like, what'd you do today? I said, I went down to the fire hall and saw the. I said, I went down to the fire hall and saw the guys down there, had a good cup of coffee, just to catch up on. She's like, would you just apply and just get it all the way home? So, that's a running joke in my family, so, um, I do, I would like to thank you for the support that you've shown to our department and to the officers along the way. And, um, I'm able to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Good work, chief. I, I would, I would have to add to the chief, uh, you know, we prosecute the chief's cases and the files in Marine City. Unlike other communities, um, are always delivered to us complete and ready to go. And, uh, i- it's, it's a pleasure to go to the court. I know the judge notices it. I know we notice it. Um, on the other hand, you have a police chief who is about behavior as opposed to punishment. Um, and he has a good ability to read through when it's time to work on the behavior and not issue a punishment. It's a good characteristic in your community, so just add that.
Very nice.
Thank you, sir.
I, I'd just like to say, I, I know we had a recent incident and, uh, I just wanna say how great you guys did with taking care of that whole incident recently.
Well, that was a cryptic comment.
Yeah. It was, it was.
Well, and I would like to public to know, because I, I, I do read the comments, just bear with the process. We will release things when it's time to be released.
Correct.
We can't continually give minute-by-minute, second-by-second updates because we're busy doing other things between the coordination of trying to call another officer and get this, getting the, the county down here, the SWAT team organized, a search warrant conducted, shutting the roads down. We did the best we could with what we had. And it, you'll get the information, because I, I, all about transparency. I will tell you, but just bear with us. You're not gonna get it immediate, but you will get it.
Perfect.
It was a long night. I, I, I worked all day. The call came in at six thirty-five PM and I was here until twelve-thirty in the morning and had to come back to work at seven, so it was a long night.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Good deal.
Yep. You do, you, you guys all do us proud. We're, we're proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
I'm not sure how I get for all that.
Our city treasurer.
How do you follow that?
Katie, you've got this. We know.
Great minds. I just said the same thing.
Good evening. I'm a little shorter. Mayor and commissioners, I, how do I follow that? I mean, finance is not as exciting as fires and leases and wastewater, so, um, here it is. Um, I have some notes here. I did start mid-June last year, so the first six months to me are a blur, per se. Um, but the last six months, we spent really cleaning up a lot of processes, finding things. It sounds really minute, but filing, just getting some files in order, processes, um, training, that sort of thing. It's been nine months of cleaning, per se. Um, a lot of times, I know Jason will, he'll find me in this back room on the floor digging through boxes and organizing, so we've been doing a lot of that. Um, the audit was done. You guys got that presentation last meeting, I believe. Um, it wasn't, it was a good audit, not a great audit, and I expect next year's to be better. We're already way farther ahead from where we were, including bank reconciliations are on time. Um, so, all those findings, we really took them serious and Mary Ellen is still helping me get things going, you know, being assist, so. Um, one of the good things is two thousand and twenty-three taxes were collected, they're balanced, and already to the county for settlement, which is huge, um, two months earlier this year, so I think that's a great thing. Um, some twenty twenty-four goals later in twenty twenty-four, um, streamlining some processes, getting some, like, technology in place, scanning invoices, easier access, um, bringing it into twenty twenty-four, per se. Um, it's really hard for us, when we need to go look for things, to just go look through files, files. It's just not efficient or time, time management at all. Um, so, scanning invoices for accounts payable, that's one of my future purchases or reference, you know, researching. Um, accounts receivable, we struggle a little bit right now on knowing who owes us money. I'm, I'm not gonna lie. Um, we have a couple different BSNA modules sending out instead of having one common one, so it would really be nice to have one common accounts receivable program that you could go in and see who owes. So, and then if the clerk's office had to send an invoice, they could send it through their PD, same thing, like kind of a intermingled, um, system. Um, the postage meter's being updated. We're looking into automated mailing, so instead of having our staff literally fold and put tax bills in envelopes, we would send the files out and they would be mailed electronically by in, to another company would send them out for us. Um, again, seems really minor, you know, but when you're sending out twenty-five-hundred envelopes, it could save a ton of time. And with water bills being quarterly, it could save a ton of time, so. Um, some things, I know Scott, you may have touched on this, um, we're looking at having some educational meetings for employees, uh, mainly on savings, retirement options, what they have, um, options for insurance, things like that. It's kind of been a little crazy, unknown of what's available, what's not, who has what. Um, so, we're cleaning that up as well as I wanna do an open enrollment period more annually where we have some people signing up for insurance and not signing up insurance, and it's not any time of the year, just like a one-time-a-year, creating some processes with that. Um, training, I'm going to the Basic Institute in April. I'm looking forward to it in Kalamazoo. Um, I haven't been a week from my kids in a, for a week, but there's a first time for everything, so I have that. Um, BSNA training for staff. We've talked about going in-house or sending them to Bath if needed. Um, and then the goal is to get the actual reports and the audit done much earlier this year so that we can enjoy Christmas.
Great.
That's where I'm at. Any questions?
No, just wanna thank you for all your hard work. I know how bad things were and, um, we really, really appreciate all your hard work trying to get that mess cleaned up.
Yeah, it's been interesting. It's been good, though.
Yeah.
You learn a lot and I didn't realize how organized I like to be until I had to organize everything, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Oh, goodness. Glad Katie was before me. Everybody else is way taller. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, thank you. Um, I might, I'll try not to be long-winded, but, uh, I have a lot on my sheet here. And it may seem like all of the department heads sat in the same room and came up with their annual reports and goals, because you're gonna hear a lot of the same things, uh, come from the clerk's office. My main things you're gonna hear is efficiency, elections, and technology. Like, those are, those are the big things. Um, starting out, going on based on twenty twenty-three, I started the interim clerk role in February and did that until July, when, uh, you formally approved my contract to come on full-time as the city clerk. Worked both city clerk's office and the police department until the end of November. Transitioned over to the clerk's office full-time at the end of November. Um, left the, the police department after ten years. A little rough, but made the transition and, and we're running smooth. Uh, probably a good bet, because when it came to election season, things got a little, a little tiring, a little long, uh, but we made it through, and I, I'll touch on that a little more later. Uh, we received, clerk's office received and processed fifty-four Freedom of Information Act requests in twenty twenty-three, which may seem like a lot, but in speaking to other clerks and some FOIA trainings that I've attended, fifty-four is a drop in the bucket compared to Port Huron that has over a thousand. So, um, we get those, we try to get them out in a timely manner, and we try to get that information to the people that they request, as long as it's a public record, and w- we do follow the letter of the law in every aspect of, of FOIA. I did research and actually launched the Granicus Peak Agenda and Meeting Minutes software. Uh, we are live now for the public. It is on our website, uh, under the city commission page. Those of you who know me and know me well, know my OCD, as the chief shakes his head. I don't like where it's at on the website. I'm working with Civic Plus right now to get it moved. Uh, we do have an agenda and minutes tab right on our home screen, which it'll fit better on, just because it will get lengthy at some point to put on there and get on that commission page. It'll have to keep growing, you know, that, that embedded window more. Uh, but it is live for the, the community to go on there. You can see the agenda, agenda packets. When the minutes are approved, those will also be on there. And you also have the option, I've spoken on this before, you also have the option of subscribing to what agendas that you want. And once you sign up for those, when we publish them, it'll be after the commission gets them, excuse me, you have the option to get them sent to you. So, you'll get an email that says city commission, agenda packet, ready, uh, planning commission, all of those, those meeting bodies that the city has, uh, will be on there. City commission is on there for right now. All the other meeting bodies will follow, hopefully here by the end of the month, beginning of April. Um, also, you see, I have mine out. All of the commissioners and the mayor have theirs as well. Uh, did the research and coordinated the tablet purchase in order to utilize the Peak Agenda and Meeting Minutes software. And it also provides us as department heads, city manager, a way to work remotely if we have to. We can remote access our computers. That's a lifeline. You know, the treasurer and myself go to these trainings for a week. That's a lifeline to connect us back to the office if we're needed, and we can get our work done on the go. So, that's, I, I'm big on technology. I mean, I grew up in the technology age and I'm big on it. And if we can utilize it, I say we utilize it. So, that, that was a, a big one. Um, I did research, and still currently researching, um, with city manager Adkins', uh, new website hosting service and design, as well as a few applications, and city manager Adkins' touched on a few of those, a citizen reporting module, um, forms module, where citizens can actually go on the website, fill out the forms online, not a PDF, not a paper copy. It is a fillable form on there. It goes through a workflow and approval process at the city office level, and we can approve it from there. And also, a SMS or email blast, and again, city manager touched on that a little bit too. So, we're still in the research phase of that, but again, if you've seen our website, it, it's archaic and, and it needs, it needs updating. We need to come into twenty twenty-four and make that more accessible to, to the citizens and be more transparent on that. Moving into the cemetery, I don't have as much as the DPW does on that. They do great work over there. Michaela is awesome when it comes to cemetery. She deals with all of the deed purchases, all of the foundation pours, the headstone placements, pretty much all of it. I signed the deed book on it. Uh, she gives me a monthly report on it. For twenty twenty-three, we had ten full burials and fourteen urn burials, and I didn't have the exact number down, but I wanna believe it was four urns that were placed into the columbarium, so that is being utilized. People are using that for urn burials, so, um, that is always the option. Twenty twenty-three, prepared for, or prepared the new election equipment received through the early voting grant. That was one of those wishy-washy things. Are we getting it? Aren't we getting it? Love unfunded mandates, as the city attorney pointed out earlier, or late last year. Uh, we did receive what we requested, two new tabulators, a new VAT, and two new laptops, so prepared that, got that all set up, and we did use it during our early voting. Worked flawless. I mean, it is way faster than the old equipment. Unfortunately, you can only use it for early voting. So, we came to election day and it was like night and day to the tabulators on them processing the ballots. And hopefully, uh, we can come to, or I can come to the commission later on requesting to upgrade our actual election day tabulators to this new version that we got through for early voting. Going on to election day, uh, prepared for and held the presidential primary, which included the nine days of early voting. To run down some numbers for you, we had sixty-six voters during the nine days of early voting, which equates to a two percent voter turnout of our total registered voters. Election day, three hundred and sixty-four voters, which is a twelve percent turnout. And, but we did have a ninety percent return on absent voter ballots. We had a fifty percent received on applications for absentee ballots, but ninety percent on returned of ballots that we did send out for that. So, absent voter ballots, that's a great number. It's a great turnout for that. Presidential primary in-person turnout, twelve percent. It's low, which historically presidential primaries are a little lower, and the early voting, really low. Around the state, it's being touted that it was a great turnout. A, a lot of Michiganders, if you will, had come out to early vote. Speaking with other clerks around the county, it was not such a good turnout here in St. Clair County. I think the average through, um, most of the municipalities, villages, townships in the county, it was probably averaged about eight people a day. So, not, not a great turnout. And you're looking at bigger cities such as Port Huron, St. Clair, Marysville, that, um, average of eight voters a day is not great. But we made it through. Um, I wanted to take the time here as well, if, if I may, to give a shout-out and thank yous to our election inspectors, and I would like to name them by name if, if that is okay. They were a great resource to have going into my first election and not knowing much, learning through websites and all online training. So, I'd like to give a thank you to the election inspectors, Ralph Beatty, Debbie Dimick, Steve McConnell, Dave Needenthal, Joyce Rogers, Barb Watson, Mary Westlow, Karen Peterson, Michelle Goodrich, Michaela Roy, Christina Lumley, and I'd also like to give a special thank you to Carol Brown, who is, uh, city staff here and a couple of other city staffs. Uh, Carol has worked elections in St. Clair for a long time. We stole her from there. When she came on board here in Marine City, she proved to be a great asset, and it was, it was a huge help for me trying to get through this first election. And she was here every day with me for nineteen days straight. She worked every day of early voting. She was here for eighteen hours on election day, and it was that nice lifeline of somebody to bounce those ideas off of and when I felt stressed in my office and wanting to run out the door, she assured me that everything would be okay. And it was. Uh, I'd also like to thank Katie and Scott for the support through the election process, um, kinda covering for me in the office when I was back here, running around to the county, back and forth. I got in a lot of steps, but I didn't lose any weight, so what they tell you about walking is not true. And also, I'd like to thank Jeff Schmidt and all the DPW workers. They raced to get an additional election security closet built here in our storage room. They put our ballot box out there. When I asked, I said, when you guys have time, do it. They were here within twenty minutes, had it done. The, the DPW's, bunch of great guys over there that, they will do anything you ask, when you ask them to do it, and that's just a great crew. I will quickly run down what's to come here in twenty twenty-four. Uh, as city manager Adkins stated, I'll be attending year one of the Michigan Association of Municipal Clerks Academy later this month for a week. It's a three-year process, one week per year for three years to become a master clerk in the state of Michigan. Uh, we'll be rolling out the Peak Agendas and Minutes for all boards and committees by April. All of them are in the software. I have them all set up. It's just getting to those meetings to get those agendas set up and put out to the boards and committees from there, but that will be coming in April, so that'll all be available on the website for citizens to look at. Also, continuing research on website hosting service and applications and looking to receive commission approval and launching late in twenty twenty-four, early twenty twenty-five, once we have everything there. Also, researching and continuing to research and seeking approval of new or updated phone service to suit the needs of the city departments. Uh, our Comcast is ten years old now, and it's just, again, it's archaic. There's new technology out there. There's more things that we can utilize for them, and we're looking at different services that can make it more efficient for us a, as a city to, to run smoothly. Also, looking to integrate technology to make the department run more efficiently. Again, whatever we can do technology-wise is, is better for us. It saves time. We can spend time working on other things, working more with the community and the citizens, other departments. So, technology is, is huge in that aspect. We will be preparing and administering the primary election in August and general election in November. Those will start, August will start probably mid-June with sending everything out, early voting in July, uh, November, same thing, about month and a half before that election we will start. Uh, that being said, if you are interested in becoming an election inspector, we are in need. It is a fun time. We provide food. We provide laughter, and you also get paid for it. So, I'll put my shameless plug out there too, if, if everybody, anybody who wants to apply, please fill out application and, and submit it to my office and we'd like to bring you on board. like to bring you onboard. I, two able bodies here, I see, as well.
We're busy with the police.
And if we don't have a fire call.
Right. Also researching more modern technology and security pieces to create more efficient and secure elections. Again, there's new technology out there. I, I explained it with the tabulator pieces and the, the VAT pieces, which is a voter assist terminal, which is electronic voting for people that need to use it, or anybody that would like to use it, just to make that more efficient and secure. Also working on new utility billing policies with City Manager and the treasurer, and also some forms to better track payment arrangements and water shut-offs coming to the utility department. We're noticing with some of these bills are getting very, very high throughout town. And without doing shut-offs, it's, nobody wants to do it. It's, it's a hard decision to make, but we will be working on some policies for that and bringing them to the board for approval and, and hopefully instituting that mid-spring to early summer. Also, working on some changes to peddler and solicitor permits, and possibly requiring IDs for those applicants that they'll have to display, especially the solicitors as they walk around town. I know that's a big thing, coming from the police department and talking to the police chief over the years. People always call. Can they be there? Well, now they can have an ID that'll say they're a solicitor, they're a peddler. They'll have to display it around their neck on a lanyard. It'll come at a cost to them, and it'll be part of that, that application. As well as that, I have been researching and continue to research a simplifying and updating the business license ordinance. I know we've had some discussions here as, as the commission on that, and also looking at the fee structure of that as well. Just doing some research, trying to compile different things from different municipalities, and hopefully we can bring that to you later this year as well for it. Couple more things, bear with me. Working on, speaking with the city manager, I'm working on a social district marketing plan. I know it's part of that whole resolution that we passed, but we need to get that out there on our website and get it out for people. We currently have two participants in the social district out of all the eligibles. And speaking with the city manager, DPW superintendent, police chief, we're looking to have a meeting with any of those eligible establishments here in the spring before we get nice weather, just to educate them, you know, tell them what the social district is all about, give them the material they need to pass along to their customers, and promote that social district a little more. I think there's confusion out there, not only amongst the establishments, but the, the citizens as well. So we kind of want to clear that up with them, with the establishment owners, and then we can pass that along to the, the citizens as well, so that flows free and there's no issues with it, you know, going to the, the police department for enforcement or city offices here for any applications or questions, anything like that. And last but not least, looking at creating and instituting processes for efficiency throughout the clerk's department and city offices to help promote transparency. And some of the things I named with the technology pieces and the web hosting and things like that, I think we can meet that goal of promoting that transparency and getting that information out to residents as, as quickly as we can and as efficiently as we can. And that is all I have. Any questions?
No.
All right.
The voting machines, the tabulators, that was on loan from the state, right? You requested one, you got two.
Requested two, got two.
Requested two, got two, right. Requested two, told you were gonna get one, got two.
Yes.
And anyway, but those were only on loan for early voting, but they're kind of...
Those are ours.
Those are ours.
That was probably the only funded part of that unfunded mandate.
But again, they're only to be used for early voting.
Only for early voting, yes.
Can't convert them to...
Unfortunately, no. No, that's part of that stipulation written into that. You have to have separate equipment for early voting, and then you do election day.
Okay.
Why? I wish I had that answer for you, but I can't find it anywhere, and nobody can give me a clear answer on it.
Two percent of our voters enjoy...
Yes.
Good job, clerk.
But yeah, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Great work.
And last but not least, mayor and commissioners, a report from the planning commission and our chairman, Mr. Moran.
Chief, I almost made the volunteer fire department, but the Navy got me first, so. Madam Mayor, commissioners. Ouch. As you can see, we're off to a good start. Back in January of '23, the planning commission came to the resolution that we needed a complete revamp of the master plan and the recreation plan. So we set out to find suitable assistance within the planning community. We sent out a request for... Proposal. Thank you. Can't read my own writing. Anyway, we wound up interviewing three companies. We contacted cities that these companies had done master plan or recreation plans for. We chose finally, after looking at the top three, McKenna, to do our master and recreation plan for us. Also, in, in March of last year, we began putting together zoning maps for the city commission for the marijuana retail operation. We were asked to do setbacks from 250 to 1,000 feet. We did that, and we've been kicking those around ever since. In April, we reviewed the zoning and the zoning maps, and we passed those on to the city commission. And again, we're still working with those. Beginning in May, we did the master plan kickoff. We had a kickoff meeting. In July, we published a survey, both online and, and paper. And, you know, we, we tried to use every possible venue to get it in front of the public. I think we got over 800 responses back on that eventually. In September, we spent some time reviewing those survey results and working on goal worksheets. We also reviewed a couple of site plans for a truck repair company and, and apartment complex. In October, we had an, an open house here for the master plan. We had quite a good turnout. A lot of, of really good ideas came out of that open house that have been integrated into the master plan and the recreation plan. The planning commissioners also attended the Metro Planning Commission Fall Workshop. Always a good thing to review the zoning regulations and the rules around planning. We had a good turnout for that. December and January meetings were canceled for one reason or another. So moving forward, we have had the first reading of the master plan and recreation plan goals. And we will continue with that next week. We'll be going through the second reading. Hopefully, if everything is changed the way we want it to, we will be submitting that to the city commission. You guys can review it. There'll be 63 days out there where we can have you guys review it. It gets published with various other communities. They have an opportunity, if they want to, to review it and to comment. So once we get that back, we'll then have a public hearing on the master plan. We'll take all of that input, refine it, hopefully put the master plan to bed by late summer, early fall. We have a public hearing coming up this coming Monday. We have two applicants who are looking to do a little bit, something a little bit different as far as our, our zoning goes. City Manager, Mr. Scott already mentioned that we're, we're looking at a planned, planned unit development situation and a contractual development situation where we're kind of going a little bit outside the box so that we can make use of some existing property that would not be usable, since it's, it's a church, or it's an old gym, actually, in a residential area. And there's really not much call for that. So we're looking to help them put in a satellite business office there. We are looking at, as a result of, of the planning that we've done with the, the master plan, we're looking at moving forward with some out-of-the-box thinking as far as particularly residential development here in the city. We need more middle-income development. We need more senior development. And we're looking at ways of maybe tweaking our zoning to allow different configurations of buildings, multifamily dwellings, townhouses, things of that nature. So hopefully, this master plan and the changes that we've built into the master plan will help us to do some of the things that we need to do in this city as far as developing housing and small businesses. Once that master plan is done, the, the next fun job comes to, we have to review our zoning. And reviewing zoning is always a fun, fun thing to do. So we'll, we'll wind up, that's pretty much going to take up our, our time for the rest of the year. The recreation plan, we are still looking for ways to expand community usage of parks, of, of the beach, of the marinas. And unfortunately, we weren't able to get the, the property at Washington Life School, but we're, we're still moving forward and trying to pick up some new park areas to, you know, we want a water slide, we want a skate park. Those things haven't died, just because we haven't picked up that property. Any questions?
That's great.
Hope I kept it short. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And now on to item 12B, the police department radio purchase approval.
So intrigued by everybody's annual report, I forgot. So, good evening again. As part of the upcoming budget, opportunity was presented to myself regarding the encryption of these radios. County Commissioner Van den Bosch has been very, he's been a good commissioner, coming to me and saying, I have monies for you to help complete this project. There was no really negotiating. He asked me how much I would approximately need. I told him. He said, consider it done. So he's allocating $25,000 to the department to purchase these radios. They'll get seven brand-new portables, three in-car radios, with a total project of $27,112.04, in which I will allocate into our budget for next year. That, that remaining $2,112.04 will come out of my budget. So you'll see in the upcoming budget, the $27,000 project, just because Katie wants it that way, to show revenue coming in and then revenue going out. What I am looking for tonight is just approval to make that phone call tomorrow to get these radios ordered, because it's a four-to-six-month turnaround, at least, to get these radios. So might as well get the ball rolling on this one, and we won't probably pay for anything like this until later on into '24.
I just want to clarify again that in working through the My Deal process that we're members of, the bidding portion has already been done, and we are getting the most competitive pricing from Digicon Global under the My Deal. So there's no one else that can beat that price. The competitive bidding has been done for us. So likely, we need two actions. Approval of the portable radios, as indicated in the memo by the chief, and then also authorization for the subvershiping agreement.
So when you approve the three, you just, just need the 2,000 because you've already got the 25,000 from...
I, I won't need anything right now. We're going to build that into next year's budget.
Okay, all right, yeah.
I'm, I'm just looking for the approval tonight to move forward, and then everything else will come back to you.
To order them?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we allow Chief Haslip to go forward with the purchase of these, or to go to the next step for purchase of these radios.
Motion this part. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner O'Brien?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
Mayor Van den Bosch?
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson?
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen?
Yes.
Commissioner Carrick?
Thank you.
Did you need the, the second to enter the contract?
No, I believe that Commissioner's motion recovered.
Yeah, you're okay.
Okay. Okay. On to 13 administrative reports.
I think you've heard them all.
I think we've covered that pretty good.
Administrative overload.
Oh, the city attorney, though. Do you have anything additional? You didn't.
Oh, jeez, I don't know. No, I'm good. Just, just one thing with the clerk's job. I want you to recognize that the, there's a lot of laws that govern cemetery operations. Cemetery seems to run by itself until you get litigation, and it's never good. So I would commend your, your handling of your cemetery. You have been, without dispute, since I've been here, we've had no, no cemetery-type claims or disputes, which is remarkable. So it's a, it's a good thing for you to appreciate.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to 14, Commissioner Privilege and Liaison Reports. And we'll start with Commissioner Clausen.
Just everything is going fine. I mean, we think, moving along with the, the planning commission and stuff, and I'm happy that everything is going the way it's going. I did hear from somebody about the police cars. He said the backseat was hard. I said, well, it's plastic.
We had a couple seats removed to put the hard drive in.
That's all I have.
I have nothing tonight.
Commissioner O'Brien?
No liaison report, but a, a couple of hopefully brief comments here. One, I want to sincerely thank all of our workers and crew from DPW, our various departments in office here. This is fantastic work and fantastic reports. I love hearing it. It's a wonderful thing to be coming into as a newer commissioner on this body, to know that, you know, the job's fairly easy because you all are doing a great job. So I appreciate that a lot, as well as the election inspectors that worked for this, to make this a successful run thus far. And I, I want to do a special thank you to how the recent incident was handled. I know we mentioned it a few moments ago, or a little bit earlier in the meeting. These things are very difficult and very touchy. I think they're very touchy for how the public reacts to them as well, and this was done strong. It's hard to not get the information when you want it. You want to know what's going on. You want to know now. You're worried. You've got family or friends in the area. This information can't come out immediately, and it requires patience. I, being an academic myself at Wayne State, I was in touch with cohorts on campus at MSU when they had their own incident not terribly long ago with an active shooter. And the reporting that was coming out on social media feeds was problematic for the situation. There was one gunman. People identified that there were three gunmen. They said they were hearing it on the police reports, this problem of not having these radios encrypted. They were sending police to areas that they didn't need to be, that allowed the gunman to end up escaping the campus because of this, right? And they reported and identified a wrong suspect who happened to be out in New England, sitting on his couch that evening, that he was supposedly on campus with a gun, creating these problems. We have a responsibility to each other to not spread false information, and we, we can exercise that through patience. And I ask that our community continues to exercise that restraint during these situations and trust that the information is coming. So thank you very much for how this was handled. It means a lot that I'm part of a community that did this so well. With that, that's it for me.
Very well put. The only thing I'd like to add is, this is the first time we've ever really done an annual report like this. So from a new commissioner's perspective, just understand, you've got it great because it's the first time that we've really done something like this. And it was wonderful, at least in my, this is my fourth year, but yeah, in the four years that I've been on the city commission, that's the first time. And it was wonderful. So thank you all for the patience for putting that together, for writing these reports, and for just being great people to work with in general. Stay safe, and as always, contact us with anything you might need or want to talk about. Thank you.
I agree with both of what they said about all our staff, that you guys all do a wonderful job. It's, I know they're difficult jobs. And for somebody that's been on here for almost 14 years, that's the first time I've seen that good of a reporting coming from the city myself. So it's never really been done. And I, I just want to thank Scott and all the staff, because you guys are pulling this all together, and it's... because you guys are pulling this all together, and it's really nice to see, because for as long as I've been on here, you're right, Jim. This is like a first, so, and it's just wonderful to see everything working together. So that's it.
Thank you. All right, I just have a couple of things. We had a CED meeting. We did talk about, as City Manager discussed, redevelopment-ready communities, best practices two. Our next meeting will go into best practices three. Public is welcome to come and see that. We did talk about possibly moving into a community market study soon. And then a couple of things that were brought to us was information, the Chamber of Commerce is going to be doing a light-up blue for April for autism awareness. They want everybody to do blue decorations at the businesses or, or have blue lights on so that we can draw awareness to autism. Also, the Marine City Business Coalition, which is a separate group, is also going to be working on some kind of promotions, and they're starting a, one of the promotions is called Get Late, and there are going to be some evening hours on Thursdays where they're going to be open up later to attract people in and get more business. And then they're also going to be working on some sales promotions, which they may have to talk to City Manager about doing some event-type permits to do those, to just make sure everything is good with that. Again, just like everybody else said, thank you to all of our employees. Thank you for the department heads for putting this on. It was great and wonderful to hear how everybody's doing, everyone's working together, and then to see what's been done and what we can look forward to, what's upcoming with everybody. And I do want to say, again, thank you to Jason for what you've done with the elections, new city clerks, starting with the, you know, early voting, everything you had to do. I heard from our city attorney tonight that it was pretty commendable, where he was dealing with a lot of clerks with a lot of issues, and you weren't having those issues. You were working through them, you had plans, and you did what you had to do. And I'd just like to share with everybody an email that was received to the city regarding the elections, and it was from a election inspector named Mary Westlow. And she states that she's acted as election inspector during the recent primary. Had the opportunity to observe the work ethic of a number of city employees during the election process. The purpose of this communication is to express the appreciation for the quality of work that was demonstrated. City employees demonstrated a high degree of intelligence, professionalism, and caring for the public. The city should be proud of the individuals that represent it and grateful to them. Sincerely, Mary Westlow. Now that said a lot.
Thank you.
Nothing about OCD at all.
All right. And so now, we'll go on to item 15 for closed session, and has to discuss with legal counsel pending litigation under 15.268E. And I'd just like to remind everybody that we will not take any action during closed session. We will come back in the open session if any action is to be taken. If anybody wants to wait here, we did change last meeting. We will leave, we will go into the conference room. That way, you'll know when we come back into open session, and you can still be here. Previously, everybody had to go in the parking lot and kind of wait, so... Can I get a motion to go into closed session?
I make a motion that we go into closed session.
Support.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Is it...
Yes.
You have a roll call.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Van den Bosch.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Brien.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.